I apologize for that. Um, starting out.
You want us to look at the one that's in the packet also?
Um, they're different, so.
So this rules.
Look at the one I put on your desk.
Got it.
Yeah. Um, Justice Court benefits is over. I asked Julie to look into that. Did you have a chance to look into that?
I did.
Um, let's see. My budget. I'm over on public notices. I'm also over on services not otherwise classified. Um, I'm wondering if you'll allow me to move some money from my benefit line item to cover those costs.
Sorry, can we, can we go back to the county commission?
Sure.
One? Is that one, do we need to worry about that?
We do need to worry about that because you're going to go over budget.
We're over on benefits.
So what benefits do we use?
Who's getting benefits?
Like your FICA, your things like that. I don't know if I calculated wrong. I don't know.
We don't have benefits.
Right.
Well, but we would play FICA and social security.
Social security.
Oh.
That, that, that's all lumped into benefits.
Okay.
Not much of a benefit.
FICA on a few hundred bucks.
But.
It's going to be a whole lot.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be, but.
Yeah, the commission.
Here, I've got five bucks in my wallet.
The Justice Court benefit line item is also about the same problem. And I asked her to look into that one too.
So it may be that both of those were miscalculated.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm sorry, just wanted to check those.
No.
And as far as you're, you're moving money from benefits line item to cover these other amounts, are sufficient in your benefits line item?
Yes. Yes, I'll have excess in my wages and benefits because of the personnel changes.
Oh, that's right.
Um, treasurer is asking basically for the same thing, wanting to move some money from, money doesn't benefit line items to some various line items in that budget. Um, we also have another employee that was paid off of our own account and is being fixed.
So these two first items, more balancing the existing budget for this year, not request for a new year?
Yeah, this is all 2022.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, given resources, we talked about doing the Christmas party and moving some money from, um.
Fundamentals.
Yeah, some fundamentals that will require a public hearing, which I will schedule for you next week. So just giving you kind of a heads up. Um, Jeremy needs some money for Cassell for the accounts receivable module and also um, the contract that we signed that we're going to be paying once a year, correct, Frank?
Right, that's what, that's correct. So what it is, is it's basically, what he did there is we paid for it in advance, but it took up the first six months of next year. So that's why. That's all it is.
Community development is still a mess. Um, I figure we'll probably take care of that last public hearing of the year and just clean that all up. Get the revenues right, get the expenditures right. See if we can just look that.
The good thing is, all of the, except for that first line, all the rest of those are all reimbursement lines as well. So they may be over, but our revenue should also be fine.
Right.
And we're budgeting differently for next year. He's requesting a different type, you know, for next year. So hopefully we don't have this problem. Um, the sheriff, we've got to move some money from the sheriff to community development for a wrong employee code again for payroll.
Um. So back up on the GIS, isn't that to do with, with that grant that has not come in yet? Because we have to spend it first and then we get reimbursed for it?
We can ask Jeremy.
That's, that, isn't the GIS the?
Jeremy does the GIS account.
Oh, I thought that was the recorder.
No. She does the survey at night.
Okay.
Ambulance, we also have some incorrect P L for payroll. We'll be fixing those. Um, benefits, that's another one I have to look at for ambulance. They're 85% used. Um, public works, Mike and Brett and I met, I don't know, a month ago. And decided to request a $10,000 fund balance transfer to his equipment supplies and maintenance and utility accounts, 5,000 for each. Those, both of those line items are over.
Yeah, utility costs have gone through the roof.
Yes. Um, parks is also a mess. I have not gotten a response from Brett on how to fix the problem, but he has a little budget on most of his line items in parks. Um, not sure how you want to fix that. If you want me to.
Do we think it's coded wrong?
I don't. I need a little budget.
Budget wrong. Did we transfer the? This is 2022. No, never mind. That was last year.
And maybe a little over spending?
What about the fairgrounds though? Fairgrounds, it almost seems to me like, is that from the fair?
No, it's a separate budget. We have a fairgrounds budget.
Well, it's part of the parks.
But it's parks. You're right. It's part of the parks. It's a subset of the parks.
But I would assume most of the fairgrounds.
There's three separate lines for it.
I mean, the fair is over. Most of the activities are over there. So those 85% hopefully will be okay, but the ones that are 112, 115% over.
Okay, so like Robert was just asking, there's three different lines for fairgrounds.
Yeah, and I, I needed to ask Brett why there's three different ones.
Are these?
16, 17% over and $84. It's like, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's not a, it's close.
That's a small budget to begin with.
So in the. Is there any budget training?
I don't think so.
There is some available.
For our department heads?
Yes.
We certainly ought to have something though.
Are we talking about that in the next? Well, they're very well aware of what their percentages are, what they're spending, and if they're not keeping track, they're going to go over.
I, no, I, I realize that, but I, I feel like in some cases, um, not a whole lot of research and work goes into budgeting other than just kind of a shot in the dark fixing a number to, you know?
And, and yeah, I think the thought there too is that you don't, you can come up to your budget, but you cannot go over until approved prior, not, not, by the way, this is over budget because we were just allowed to spend the money. I think that's how it works with my wife's credit card anyway. Maybe not.
That was a public card.
It was.
I know.
Because it was the last one that really concerned me because I've, I've been being told for a long time now in making decisions and sharing them with the rest of the council, that we have excess money in that area and, and now we're saying we're in the red $220,000. Because I know we based a trailer purchase based upon having excess money.
Which one are you looking at?
Oh, he's looking at the very last one.
Oh, we haven't got there yet.
No, I know, because it, it's just concerning in the, in the same, in the same.
He did, he did hold on that trailer though. He stopped that. And we told him, this doesn't look right. So that has not been purchased. And there's no intent to move forward with that. Because the money that he shows and what Leslie had are two different numbers. And I thought he was going to work on reconciling that, but he hasn't seen anything on it.
I asked a couple weeks ago and there's still been nothing.
That's a $400,000 swing.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah. Clearly, there's.
Morgan High Math.
But, but is there, I mean, just to follow along those lines, is there a way with the budgets that we can say, you, you don't have money, you can't spend money?
Absolutely.
Well, I think a lot of his mentality, they just think the government's open-ended and it's not.
Well, your department has to be held accountable for your budget.
Well, and that's, that's the thing. And it's not that we can't move monies around for different reasonings like we are now, but I definitely think, in my opinion, there shouldn't be a red one in here. They should be coming to us and saying, I, I need this and here's why and here's where it's going to come from. We shouldn't have any red. Is there a way that we can set it up where they can't go into the red or?
Well, I have stopped paying all parks, but all bills.
Until they can clear this up.
Mostly do, but there's no money and I have no resolution as to how to fix it. I'm not going to continue to spend money in that budget.
Well, but that's when they, the department heads would need to come and petition.
Yeah, yeah. And there might be good reasons also. There actually might be good reasons. I don't mean to push, push back against the, we're government, we do it every law.
I know, I know, but that's the mentality.
There can be good reasons, but.
To me, I'd save every darn dime we could do. And if we don't by chance have the money, we don't have the money. We don't spend it.
We just keep covering it from fund balance.
Yeah, I know. I'm tired because we've got to have that fund balance for some other things.
I agree.
Well, other than the operations of the county?
Right.
Just a manial thing.
I mean it. I, I don't disagree with the notion that they should be tracking their budget. They ought to be able to forecast when they're going over and they come in on a timely basis. But there are also occasions when they're going to be hit with a surprise and we, we have a fund balance. I'm uncomfortable with discussions of saying there's no money when we have a $2 million fund balance, you know, it's, I'm, I, I think we can put in a procedure, we can do all of that and, and ask them to come in in advance, but let's.
Well, it doesn't have to be. I'm just saying, why can't they reach out to their commissioner that's over them? And say, hey, this is where I'm at. Do you mind discussing that with the other commissioners? Whatever.
Yeah, or, or that, we've had during the budget meetings, some forms where there's requests to increase and just get it filled out and completed. And hopefully 90% of the time it's in advance and we understand the basis for it.
All right.
I think that, I think we know what the origin of the airport one is.
Yeah, this is just going to take care of the problem.
So are you asking, which ones are you wanting direction on?
I'm just trying to give you a heads up for your public hearing, which will be next time. And I also have permission to take any money from wages and benefits to move it over to this budget. That, that will operate, but I wouldn't touch those two line items without your approval.
I think especially where we're talking about taking it out to other budgets, I don't have any concerns with that. I think the concern and the reason we were worried about it was we didn't want a department head to take it from other places and throw it in there, you know, without.
Only come back with the next year's budget request and saying, oh, well, we already have this problem.
I did have a question for you, Mike, on the class B road fund meeting we had with Brett. My note said move 30,000, but I put on the paper, move 60,000. Do you remember?
I don't remember what that was for.
Well, it's to cover all of these overages, but.
It's from the fund balance.
Yeah, well, we're going to move 250,000 from fund balance to the highway.
But no, the, the 60,000 you're saying from like B and C fund balance?
Right.
Because that's a separate fund and there is some balance there.
But I have two different numbers. I'm no longer going to remember which fund.
I don't. Let me see if I've got anything written down.
If you've got, if you've got these, all of these ones in red on that class B, that equals the 60,000. That's a total of 60, right there.
Okay, well, then that's why.
And that was probably the intent because the 250, so 60 was coming from B and C balance, which is a separate fund.
And then 250.
And then 250 was coming from the fund balance, the general fund balance, and that's the bridge match money. It wasn't to offset any budgets. It was simply for match money.
What are you, what are you seeing that adds up to 30 or 60?
I'm saying up to 60 because you've got the one that's on the line, it's 20 dash 44.
All four of those?
Yeah, all four of those equals 60.
So you've got 30,000, 2,000, 15,000, and 13,000.
That's it. So total of 60.
Okay, so it is 60. I just was concerned that I had 30 written down.
I hope there's, is there 60 in the B and C road fund balance?
So if you transfer 60, he's still over 15 more?
No, he's in the, he'd be.
That, that would reverse, only used, only used 58, 16,000, 75.
And on that move of the 250, I, I want to run that ask by COG first.
Oh, when do you have another COG meeting?
Every month.
Have you already?
I thought, I thought this was already done prior to this year or last year.
This was what we.
Both in requests from a while.
This is what we agreed to at the beginning of this year when we talked about the fund match for the Peterson Bridge and what we were going to have to pay this year on the Croydon Bridge.
We've already agreed to.
Yeah, so I think, I think you ought to ask COG for some money to help with our match next year with the Croydon Bridge project. Okay, that's my thought.
I didn't realize we'd agreed to the 250.
Yeah, this was, it was clear back in what, maybe January or February, I think, when we first talked.
Of our first year.
Yeah, it's been quite a while ago because we knew it was coming, but.
And we did pay it out, so.
Oh, that's been moved already?
Yeah.
Oh, nevermind.
Oh, no, you're talking, you're talking the bridge for this Young Street Bridge project.
Yes, I'm sorry.
This 250 is the Peterson Bridge and Croydon Bridge.
You're right. Too many bridges.
Yeah. Expensive bridges, very expensive bridges.
Um, I had a question on the fairgrounds capo, three month fund, we're 4,300 over. Is that a rollover account?
It is.
Okay, so we really thought I shouldn't even need to worry about it.
We should be fine. Well, have we had the cell tower lease come in yet on that?
I have asked Kimberly.
We'll have to look and see because that's a big chunk of it.
I thought that it was, but I just wanted to make sure. And then just the last thing is the wind fire problem. And I still have a hundred. I was reaching for that.
So what was the discussion that Brett had about this?
Can I go backwards one bit? I didn't see any travel and training for us on here anywhere or where.
You're not over by this.
Where, okay. Yeah, we've got plenty.
I always put things over that were over 70%.
Oh, okay, all right.
We talked about.
I just know there's a lot of them that are planning on going.
We haven't actually budgeted yet.
To UAC and, and so, and there, a lot of them are closed, so.
Yeah.
So what was the thought process on, with what Brett said on this?
So he has totally different numbers than what the county has in terms of both the revenues and the expenditures. And we told him, you need to go back through and reconcile the two because this is way off. And like you said, it's almost 400,000 off because he was saying he still had 200,000 from his calculations. We're showing these 200 over. So when we talked to him, we said, okay, go back and reconcile this and figure out where the difference is. Because he couldn't tell us where the difference was.
And which is, and I don't know, maybe this, maybe it's my fault because maybe I need to be in that more. I just trust when he comes before us and says, I still have this much in here from here.
Well, I think we all, we all did, not realizing how much had actually come in. Now, I don't know if he, I don't know, I don't know if we don't have all of the monies from the insurance company or they haven't all been, you know, submitted to the right place.
They said they sent us everything.
But I think they've said they've sent us everything.
They did, but.
So I don't think it's on the revenue side of it, to be honest.
So can we get a, a complete number that they gave us so that we can actually track it?
Well, these are the numbers that they received, 250, 989, and 186, right?
Right, because they don't match what I.
On the received and the spent?
Whether or not they have.
On the spend, it's correct. Received is not correct. Why, it's short.
But he doesn't receive the, the checks. You receive them.
Actually, the treasurer.
Sorry, the treasurer's office receives them. So Brett thinks the number is different even though he doesn't receive the checks?
Yes, right.
Okay. Correct.
So, and I know, the only reason I'm asking is because I've noticed going through the revenues, those revenues do not match revenues that we've received. And I can state it for example, you know, of the economic development. They're not there or they're there, but they're not there in the state grants or federal grants or that kind of stuff. So it's a work in progress and trying to figure out.
And maybe they will find it.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to do. So I've been working on that too. Finding all the money, wherever it is, because we don't have it.
Do you have any other questions for me?
Mm-mm.
That was quick.
I, I meant, I was speaking for myself.
We've got to get that response from Brett.
So you're going to prepare a budget resolution to make these changes?
Unless we can straighten them out or what? Is that what you're doing, Leslie? Is if we straighten any of these out that?
They're still going to have.
We'll have a budget resolution still?
Yeah, I don't want to reach out to them.
Can I, can I ask you one more question since I'm the one that said I didn't have anymore?
Nope, no more.
Uh, in the past years when we weren't here, did, did we, did this same stuff have to happen? Do you?
Yes, but, but what's happened in the past, there's a lot more transparency with the commission now, I believe. Because in the past, we didn't see most of this until the very end of the year. And then the clerk would go in and move stuff around in the budget and we would just see that it balanced at the end of the year. She didn't bring all of it before us one by one like Leslie is doing. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, yeah. Yeah, well, it's the only way I know how to help the departments.
Yeah, because otherwise, if you don't see it, what are you going to do? Yeah.
I think Hall as well as I am.
And it's not, it's not.
Okay, if not, we've got, if there's no other questions, we've got four minutes before our regular meeting will begin if you need to.
Stand up.
Or stand up or.
Oh, I'm going to stand up.
Eat your treat.
How you doing, sir?
Good, how are you doing?
Outstanding.
So that extra amount.
You finding like your cards?
Yeah, I do. Thanks. It's here. It's yours.
Yours?
Here it is right now. So this.
You know, sometimes.
That's to pay for Cassell for the full year because it rotated in the next year.
Okay, so it was not just for, it's also going through. And to make sure just like.
Through the middle of next year.
I will say the big bag I brought, my boy to be on the football, no, we didn't get that much back.
For that one right there, I just started to say, I just got the bill. That's for the.
I had an absolute blast.
Yeah, I'm not over on.
I didn't think so. I didn't think so.
No, I just got this commissioner keeps giving things to add.
Oh, come on now. Well.
What's that? I have to blame somebody. I'm not going to take credit for it.
Well, don't blame me for it.
We have to sell some come in and address some direct tree issues. They wanted to do a scuffle work basically, so they don't have the responsibility. So it's $600. I don't need the money or anything, but I do need a, yeah, I do need a signature for each chunk.
I said you do that earlier today. Do you have to like?
I told him I don't sign anything.
Have you had plastic surgery?
I can always blame Mike like I just blamed you.
That's fine. I don't mind. It's the way it should be.
How you doing? You look lively today?
I only cut down a full tree, two foot.
Well, it looks good. You should cut down a tree every day.
And now I got four more of them to fill them in at least.
I'll show you my backyard sometimes. I've been chopping. We had 13 chopped down.
It's hard to chop.
We're skilled, right?
We want to get this one down because if we don't, if we don't have this one down, we can't.
Better you just build a building around it. The tree, it's got a little tree up the middle, like that's what that's called in California.
Yeah, but I hate box office trees too.
I don't, I don't know if this is coffee.
That's what we kept them to do.
We have a bizarre, during the spring, we have what's called the spring side. I'm serious.
Great.
It'll be in the opposite scene. Putting my head up.
And Mike, I don't know if you want to just mention that anybody that comes in to make sure that they sign this role. That's good.
Well, my miles of water, highways. That's kind of a lot.
Gets you in.
And then you're, and there's no water source there, so you have all of your water.
Okay, welcome to the Morgan County Commission meeting, October 4th, 2022. Recognize all those attendants here in person and those who are joining us online. If you have joined us in person, we'd love for you to sign in over there so we can add your name to our minutes, noting that you were here at the meeting. We will get started with an invocation or moment of reflection and the pledge of allegiance. And I've asked Commissioner Anderson to take care of that.
That's going to do 10. Sorry, I didn't think you were starting.
Did it do it all?
Okay.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet as citizens of the county and discuss county items. We're grateful for this beautiful county we live in, this beautiful valley we live in. We're grateful for the moisture that we've received recently. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy, for the sacrifice that those have made for, for us to enjoy the freedoms that we have. We're grateful for all that we have been blessed with and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please arise and repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. We will move to our consent items. First consent item is the approval of the September 6th, 2022 meeting minutes. Are there any updates to the minutes that have not already been provided to Julie? Um, I have one. So on page two, public comment, subparagraph D. Michelle, if we could indicate that Michelle stated that she has experienced harassment on the board. And then in this next sentence, she has served on many volunteer committees and never experienced the harassment that she stated she has gone through. Thank you. Any other updates? Okay, seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the September 6th, 2022 meeting minutes.
I move that we approve the September 6th, 2022 meeting minutes with the corrections. Second.
You have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next consent item is the approval of the 2022 Board of Equalization adjustments. This has been provided in our packet. Are there any questions on these adjustments? Okay, seeing no questions, I'll look for a motion on the 2022 Board of Equalization adjustments.
I move that we approve the Board of Equalization adjustments for the year 2022.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then our third item is the approval of hardship applications. Is the right page on that?
Actually, I don't see those in the package. They, yeah, they're on page 44. They're on our.
It's the city.
They're not, they're not, right, or.
They're not, they're not in the right order. Okay, thank you. Page forty-four in the PDA. There were, I think, two separate ones.
Okay, these are.
I can make a motion that we approve the two hardship applications presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve the hardship applications as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Is there still time for people or is that?
That's, that's it for this year, isn't it? But they, they can certainly apply for the coming years.
Okay.
That's 2022 taxes. Okay. Commissioners' declarations of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda.
I have a conflict with item F4. We represent Cottonwood Spring View, and I've been involved in that project.
Okay, thank you. That's been noted. Any others?
I have a conflict with three I. I represent the sewer district from the engineering standpoint.
Oh, okay. Also noted, thank you.
Is that F3?
F4 and three I.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I didn't put the F in front, maybe. F3I.
Oh, F3I, sorry.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, we will now move to public comment period. This is an opportunity, any members of the public that would like to address the commission, we would ask that you come to the podium, state your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Evening. My name is Bill Fries. I live in Mount Green. And on behalf of the Mount Green Sewer Improvement District, I'd like to personally thank the commissioners for all they have done to give us funding so that we don't have to raise our rates to do our plant expansion, given us over two and a half times capacity increase over what we have right now. So thank you all very much for all you've done for the public.
Thank you. Seeing no additional public comment, we will move to a presentation. This is from Morgan City. Our mayor is here. We'd invite him to come up and share a letter that he's, this letter's been previously provided to the commission. Just so you're aware, we do have it here in our packet, and we received it via email as well, and welcome your comments.
First off, I'd like to say that I've witnessed somebody thanking a government entity. That's pretty awesome. So, so thus far in my term, I haven't experienced that. If everybody's had an opportunity to read the letter and flip it over, is there sense in rehashing me reading it? Is there any questions you might have on the city end of things?
I just don't know if it might be good for the public to at least hear what, what you have to say.
I think it'd be helpful for the public as well.
Okay. Chair and members of the Morgan County Planning Commission, there are very few times in the history of Morgan City and Morgan County where there comes a development significant enough to an impact to warrant close collaboration between the county and the city to address mutual land use concerns. The conditional use application for Como Springs, the Springs, is such a development. As you know, the Springs have been a part of both of our histories dating all the way back to when Morgan City was incorporated. There's a new plan for development that's currently being contemplated by the county. The city would like to respectfully request that the commission consider the following issues of great concern to the city and the folks that both the county and the city serve. Como entrance, it is requested that the Como Springs entrance be required to remain at its traditional location. Commercial Street has always provided an access for patrons of the Springs. There are highway signs that currently direct traffic from the freeway to the Springs down Commercial Street. This has been accessed for years. Access for patrons, current entrance and access down Commercial Street are the most direct routes from the freeway to the Springs. This is the route that will continue to be used by patrons. The development of an access down 100 South has been suggested. The city strongly opposes this for the reasons discussed below. There is not legitimate reason for changing the location of the historical entrance. If the reason for the change is to avoid improving the bridge, it is a reason that should not be used to justify eliminating the historical location of the Commercial Street entrance and access. Negative impacts using 100 South as a main entrance to the Springs imposes a number of seriously negative impacts on the city that cannot be mitigated except by changing access and entrance to its historical location. 100 South from the golf course road is not adequate for public access. It is one lane, steep, and lack sidewalk. 100 South from State Street wraps traffic through the city and the residential neighborhoods. 100 South from State Street is also functioning as a parent pickup and drop-off for the elementary school, which it has not been designed for. Adding any initial traffic is a huge safety concern. The city has already put a crossing guard on the street to help the children cross the road as it is direct access to the back of the school. Conditional use requirements, Morgan County Code, state code, and our Morgan City ordinances regarding conditional use application are all aimed at, to the greatest extent possible, eliminating the negative impacts of a proposed use of the commune on the community. When new development or the redevelopment of old projects come before our bodies, there is an obligation to do it in the least intrusive way possible. In addition, there is much to be said for preserving longstanding historical traditions in our land uses. Accordingly, the mayor and the city council of Morgan City respectfully request that the entrance and access to Como Springs be maintained at its current location, bringing much heavier traffic down Commercial Street and preserving the historical nature of the Springs. Signed by me, the mayor, and then all of our council members.
So what's the width of 100 South Street?
I don't have the exact width, other than I know it's not.
Probably depends on where you measure it. I know it narrows down as you, as you proceed towards.
The pavement width or the right-of-way width?
The, the right-of-way width. I mean, it's, looks like it's got a sidewalk on the west side, oh, maybe on the east side as well.
Both sides.
Yeah, both sides.
Yeah, I'm getting about sixty-six feet.
Just measuring that width, if it's sixty-six feet, that's, that's a, almost a minor collector size? Is that what it's classified on your roadmap?
I couldn't bring that with me, other than, I know we have it all in the morning.
So, do you know, Mike, is this where they drop off and then they go right through here?
Yep.
Is that just an alleyway or something?
It is, yeah. Now, if you, if you go further this way, though, this road narrows down and the sidewalks end on both sides. Keep coming up. Right there. That's where it ends and the road narrows.
And the Como Springs proposing come right through here?
No, it's up further. It's right there. It's right by your home.
And do you know, we've received a lot of correspondence about this. Yours is one piece of that correspondence. Did the city's traffic engineer look at that in terms of any kind of traffic study, intersection failure, or anything like that? I know none of the correspondence we've received from others has included that.
Well, it hasn't been included yet because if we order a study before it's approved or however long we go down the process of this, it's, it's, it's gonna be worth the study.
Well.
If the county wants to take the historical entrance off of, you know, what it's been for, I don't know, I'm pretty old, and it's been long before my time, where we go down in front of the fairgrounds and into the Como Springs. And the fact Como Springs is the ones that eliminated that entrance from their facility up 100 South.
In the past, they eliminated it?
What's that?
In the past, they eliminated that?
Yeah, that's been for several years.
No, I, I, I'm just trying to understand the issue fully. I, I have to look at all of these issues in the same way.
Oh, amen.
And I understand we need to look for reasonably anticipated, to look to mitigate reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. That's the requirement of the statute. We're also supposed to act on the basis of facts as opposed to public clamor. And if there is a study that has been done, and when the application comes in, maybe they've done a study, if there's no counter-study, then that will bear upon what I, how I think about the, the solutions to the problem. That's all. That's why I said, I, sometimes, I don't know if the city has an engineer or if they outsource it. If, if there was a study that was done, it would be useful. That's all I'm saying.
The city has an engineer and we're opposed to use him. Other than, then we have to kind of look back at the historical entrance to Como Springs, which has been down Commercial Street since Como was there. It's even, even road signs and such that direct the traffic that way. So, one, one solution I can say, I'm having a problem with UDOT, is we have another exit off onto the, the access road farther up from our exit now.
Oh, the access road that runs along the highway?
Getting some flack, but we're starting to maybe address that issue. At least, the city has a study going on next year. They're gonna, gonna kind of look at those. Because everybody knows that when you come into Morgan at certain times and you turn on that interchange that we have, and then you have an immediate left after you go into the railroad tracks, that's, that's a jam.
It's dangerous.
That's a big concern right there, that bottleneck. It's also a concern when, when moms or parents, I should say, some dads drop off kids, not many, but they're crossing that side, you know, that crosswalk to get over to that alley that was, I believe, if I remember right, it was donated by a homeowner to put access to the elementary. And we have a real problem, county and city, with anybody even, even paying attention to our crosscars. We just about lost a couple of crosscars just in the recent weeks, where they were, they shot right through the intersection, crossguard in the middle, and stop sign up.
Is there any traffic control along 100 South there? Stop signs at any of these intersections that feed into it?
Of 100 South, there's not a stop sign going towards Como on 100 South. They're all on the feeder roads.
Okay.
But there is a crossguard there in the crosswalk.
Yeah, I can see the crosswalk on that image. Okay.
So let's cross fingers, mayor, if the county pushes for another exit, sell school bus, granite trucks, and all kinds of things, people going to the fairgrounds to Como. And it's, you know, it's not like you need to build an overpass, you just throw a little pavement down and you're there.
Where the exit used to be? Is that what you're talking about? Heading westbound?
Didn't be going eastward.
Oh, eastbound you're talking, okay.
Put a cross from that.
Instead of taking Morgan exit, go up to another exit and go there. The underpass is already there, the structure's already there. In my opinion, wouldn't be that big of a deal, but you know how it works with UDOT.
Yeah, can be difficult.
But they're, they're friendly enough about it, and they're gonna do a study over things, so. Appreciate.
Any other questions for the mayor?
Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We appreciate you coming in. Okay, we will move to action items. We'll start with action item number one. Clayton Pence, who is our animal control officer, we appreciate all that he does. Clayton is here to talk to us about dog licenses.
Oh, so I just, I'm just here tonight to make a proposal. So I've reached out to several counties in the past, in the past year, Summit County, Weaver County, Davis County. And they all have, they all have, in addition to their one-year licenses and their lifetime licenses, they'll have a three-year lifetime, or a three-year dog license option. This being because most rabies vaccinations, they last for three years, I believe. I believe with, with Dr. Locke, the first rabies vaccination he gives, he, he says it's only good for a year, but after that, they're all good for three years. So most of these counties have a three-year option, and that makes it easier on people who have dogs so they're not having to come in every year and re-license their dog. So I'm proposing a three-year license to go along with the one year and the, and the lifetime for the seniors. And it would be, I'm proposing that it be made available to people whose dogs are fixed. And I believe this would offer a couple of benefits, such as, I think people, if they didn't have to license every year, maybe they'd have more incentive to fix their dog. You know, if they could just license that once every three years, I don't know if it'd help the town, but it might help a little. And also, as I stated, they coincide with the rabies, so the people won't have to provide updated copy of the rabies every year. Once they got it vaccinated, they just bring it in, license their dog, give a copy of the rabies. Then when the rabies expired, the license would expire about the same time, and they just come in, bring in both of them.
Clayton, can you remind us what the current yearly rate is?
Yeah, so the current yearly rate is eight dollars for a fixed dog and sixteen for an unfixed, an unneuterized or spayed dog. Zach White, the former treasurer, he came, he came before the council earlier this year, and it was changed for next year, it was changed to ten dollars for a fixed dog. It'll be twenty dollars for a dog that is not fixed. And my proposal would be twenty-five dollars for a three-year tag.
And is that only if they are spayed or neutered?
Yes, they can only get that if they're spayed and neutered. If they're not spayed and neutered, then they'll just have to keep doing.
Doing it yearly, okay.
So if, if it is spayed or neutered, you save five dollars over that three years?
Yeah, yeah.
And so the lifetime was still, what was it, twenty-five? I know we changed it to twenty-five, but you thought it was too much.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I still do think it's too much. I mean, I think ten dollars is plenty for a lifetime tag, considering that's what it is right now. And we don't, we don't get a ton of lifetime licenses anyway. You know, we'll maybe get twenty-five to thirty a year, it seems like.
How do you follow up on the rabies vaccinations on a lifetime tag?
So in the past, I, I made phone calls, you know, to people. Once the rabies vaccinations have expired, I'll just call and say, hey, do you still have this dog? And if they still have it, I'll say, okay, I just need to update a copy of the rabies. But most people are really good, most seniors are really good, and they stay on top of it, and they will bring in an updated copy of the rabies when it expires. Or in the past, I know, I know they're sending out reminders as well, to tell people that they need to update a copy of the rabies.
So these are part of the fee schedule. And I think in order to change the fee schedule, we would need to do a public hearing, is my understanding. Garrett, do you agree with that statement?
I don't remember off the top of my head, but I would say yes, or on the side of caution.
I'm pretty sure we do. That's what we've done in the past at least, but.
You, you.
So my thought would be, Clayton, if, if we decide to move forward with this, we would just do it on the next meeting. We'd do a public hearing to change the fee schedule. Now, I know that there were some other fee schedules potentially for parks and rental of the facility. It'd make sense to probably do all that at once.
Yeah, it would.
So.
I'll put, I'll put it on the agenda then.
My suggestion is, let's do it all together and.
Because I think Leslie was gonna have it on the agenda, so I'll just.
Cause I think Leslie was gonna have it on the agenda, so I'll just, I'll just prompt her on that.
So you guys didn't already change the fees for the licenses?
We did, but we're, we're changing.
We did, but we're talking about if we, if we adopt this, we'll need to do another fee schedule change. And we want to make sure we do that the appropriate way to make sure it works. But we're talking about some fee changes on other fees in the schedule anyway, including parks and other facilities, so we might as well do it all together. So if that's the case, Cindy said she was working on it, I think that's who's working on it in Leslie's office. My suggestion would be that we have Clayton work with Cindy and Leslie and get his updates made on the same fee schedule that they intend to bring in to us.
Okay.
Are there any questions or comments on what Clayton's proposed?
I just think that you still ought to raise the senior one to twenty.
You guys already voted and approved on that.
To twenty instead of twenty-five?
No, instead of the ten that he was already doing.
Oh, we already, we already increased it to twenty-five for next year.
Yeah, cause I know he had had a discussion about, he thought it would be too much at twenty-five. And twenty-five I'm fine with too, cause I fit in.
We've already raised it to that.
Yeah, that's already done.
He's already got that.
Okay, good enough, sounds good.
Any other comments? I appreciate you thinking about this and taking the initiative to come in and suggest it. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Okay, thank you, Clayton, appreciate it. If you'll just get with Leslie and Cindy on that, they'll get your changes put on the fee schedule. Okay, Mr. Smith, inter-local agreement with the Mountain Green Fire District.
Yeah, so this is something that Cindy and I have been working on. We've been in contact with Mr. Robert Woodcock. He's the chairman of the Mountain Green Fire Protection District. And this, I believe, was sent out yesterday with a bunch of other documentation, but I've got the copy here that I can pass around if you haven't had a chance to look at it. But basically, it's just to compensate the clerk's office for running their special election this November. I don't, you know, I don't know all the details of how Cindy runs that, but they just charge per voter and it compensates the clerk's office and covers all the costs of running the election. Any questions for me?
No, I think that makes sense. Okay, do you need us to, I guess you need us to approve the signing of that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll look for a motion on item number two, inter-local agreement with the Mountain Green Fire District for operating their election for their board.
Second.
Assuming that was an approval.
That was, that was the best way to put it, the way you said it.
Okay, perfect. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Give that one to Jared.
Thank you, Matt.
Sharing the love on the second, so. Okay. Mr. Cook, discussion decision, Mountain Green Sewer Expansion Conditional Use Permit.
Thank you. So, application number 22.045 is a conditional use permit request to expand the public utility. The Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District is requesting approval of this conditional permit to put in two new buildings, two clarifying tanks, and an aerobic digester. All of these buildings and improvements were relocated north of I-84 on the south side of their property, which is south of Old Highway Road. Staff has reviewed the application and has found it complete. County engineers reviewed their construction plans and found no, no problems with it, had no complaints. We are recommending approval, the planning commission has forwarded positive recommendation of approval to.
Perfect, yes.
You say it's all north of the freeway, but yet in the, there was in that, in the packet, it's talking about an area north of the current facility. Is that correct?
If you look at their construction drawings, they, that were included in your packet.
Yeah.
There is a drawing, it's a perspective drawing that they've put in.
And that's what I looked at?
Yep, that's north of I-84.
True, but I'm just saying it's north of the current facilities that are there, except for part of it that will be on the south side of the current reservoirs.
Can I, can I make a clarification?
Yeah.
Even though I'll be abstaining from the voting. The document you just showed is what the structure will look like. That structure is actually below Pine View Reservoir up Ogden Canyon.
Right.
That's a representation.
That's not the location.
But if you, yeah, if you go to, no, it's fine. If you go to number, let's see, Blaine, we got page seventy-nine. That's where all the structures will be and those all lie north of I-84.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to be clarified because that other area north of the current ponds, I didn't know if that's where they were gonna also do any additional building.
No, they just identify that as a staging area, it looks like. Yeah. I wondered where that was, cause there's pretty similar looking buildings at Little Cottonwood Canyon, too. I'm like, which canyon is that? No mountains that close to Arrold.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Any other questions?
No, I think it's great.
I, I, do we have a representative of the applicant? I assume we do. Bill, are you representing the, the sewer district? Is there anything you'd like to share?
No, Mr. We appreciate what you're doing. And like I said, this will give us over two and a half times the capacity we have right now. We will continue to support the valley growth. And I made a comment earlier about receiving our funds for you to not raise our taxes. What I really meant was not raise our monthly fees.
Thank you, appreciate it and happy to see the project moving forward.
I have a question for Bill, if I can. So in your plans, your future plans for the sewer district, are you anticipating all of the, I mean, the amount that you've got currently that you, I mean, you say it's gonna double the capacity. What about the tripling, the quadrupling that's occurring, it sounds to me like, within the city?
Right, so what we have is two-phase expansion. Phase one is to go from eighteen hundred equivalent residential units to four thousand six hundred and fifteen. And then phase two is to go to nine thousand three hundred and thirty.
Okay, so that's about the capacity.
There's another doubling in the future, about ten years from now is when we anticipate doing that.
And that's households?
Yes, that's.
And that, and Wasatch Peaks will be included in those numbers, right?
Yes, Wasatch Peaks as well as Snow Basin.
Okay.
And Club Med.
Which is part of Snow Basin.
That is my question.
And the Nine Springs, too, right?
I don't know if you've received any information on the Nine Springs project. It would.
We have not.
It would be in your service district area as well. But there's no definitive numbers for that one yet?
Right, right, I'm just, I'm just curious if there's plans for all this that is occurring, because it's growing.
Yeah, no, we're absolutely on board. We want to get ahead of the growth like you guys want here with infrastructure, I guess, absolutely.
Okay, with that, we'll look for a motion on item number three.
I move to approve the Mountain Green Sewer Improvement District Expansion Project Conditional Use Permit. Application number 22.045, located at fifty-four forty-five West Old Highway Road, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated October fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All abstain.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item number four. Again, Mr. Cook, proposed final plat for Cottonwood Springs View Phase seven B.
Thank you. This is application twenty-two point zero three zero, Cottonwood Springs View Phase seven B final plat. The proposal is for final plat approval for twenty-six single-family lots along with nine point two zero eight acres of open space. It's located approximately at six four hundred south Wasatch Back Drive, which is in the northeast section of the Cottonwood subdivision development and east of the Silly Drive roadway. Staff has reviewed this and we attached seven conditions for, of approval. Those stipulations were included in your staff report. The engineer has reviewed it, the surveyor has reviewed it, there were no additional comments from either of them, along with fire, there's no additional comments from fire. The planning commission forwarded a recommendation of approval to you of these seven conditions.
I have a question. On this site, you have an egress, the fire egress is going out into another area. And I believe that area is not part of the Cottonwoods, is that correct?
I believe it is.
Is it, is it phase of the Cottonwoods, this one right here?
Which one are you talking about? So.
Talking about the little access road.
That little, the dark one?
Yeah.
No, that's the access, those folks came in and talked to you.
Remember that?
So that's, that's what I was curious, is, is that an egress or is that an access? Because I thought theirs was, uh, south of it, of that development of the, that we're looking at. Theirs was coming up this other little road.
That's not a road. Not wide enough, is it?
I'm just curious, I'm just.
Is that a road? It's not even wide enough for a road, is it?
Well, it's an egress and it had to be. Yeah, it's an egress for the fire department. That's what I read in all the information.
Yeah, and if you, if you look on the plat, it's owned by Morgan County Cottonwood LLC. And, and they, so it's not part, that wouldn't be part of the Cottonwoods. There is, there are phases south of this, phase seven.
Phase six is south.
Actually, six is up north and.
Yeah, six is north, but, but eight.
Eight and nine are down south.
Eight and nine would be south and east. But this particular access is headed to that Morgan County Cottonwood LLC property.
Which is the one we approved, which is different than the part of the Cottonwoods, is that correct?
It's not a part of the Cottonwood PUD.
Okay, all right. Okay. So I'm just curious then, if that's not part of it, why do we have the egress going somewhere out onto somebody else's property?
I think they're satisfying a contractual obligation to Morgan County Cottonwood.
Okay, just curious.
Is that correct, Skylar?
Yes, and I can, I can answer that. That's okay.
No problem, I appreciate it.
Yeah, in addition to the contractual agreement that we have with Morgan County Cottonwood to provide them access to, I call it the east. Gardner Cotton Creek actually owns three acres up there as well that we have planned for a future walk-in. So there's two purposes worth of ESMA going.
Okay, and we're gonna make sure that it's, in the information I read here, it said it was gonna be paved or is it just gonna be gravelled or what?
Uh, that access will be gravelled under a provision.
Okay.
There is going west out of the southern division, you know, when you vote by emergency egress.
Okay, where's that one at?
Says emergency access parcel, it's kind of hard to see, but it's right below it, right?
Yeah, right below the lots.
Right, below the lots.
You were referring to that shape on the west east. There's one right here that says emergency egress parcel. I guess technically, it's just right on the border of this project.
Okay.
It was previously plotted with a plat amendment in the phase seven A. So that's actually already on record.
All right, and we're gonna make sure that it, according to the information, it says that the landowners are gonna be made aware of whichever lots they buy that they cannot plant or develop or anything with that, correct?
On the emergency egress.
Yes.
Yes, the emergency egress will be a surface.
I just don't want the same problem we have with electric drivers.
Hard surface and owned by the MOA. So it'll be decided, but it's open space, so no private improvements can go into that open space there.
Any questions, any other questions for the applicant? Or for Josh?
Is there still considered some trails within this? I mean, I know you guys have had, got trails all over and I just wondered if you're gonna continue that procedure throughout the.
Uh, yeah, there are some trails. They may not be in this packet specifically, but when we first presented phase seven, right before the pandemic occurred, we actually had the entirety of the phases in one phase. And given the events of the pandemic, we actually divided it in two. So with the first approval with seven A's, so the property itself, there was a landscape park trail plan that was submitted with that that follows the plans that are founded for development.
I think that park looked pretty much installed. I didn't drive up to see if the playgrounds.
Facilities are all installed, the park is there, the perimeter, we're just formalizing some of the landscaping around the park and the nature, the natural trails.
All right, I'm fine.
Uh, we'll look for a motion on item number four.
I'll make a motion to approve Cottonwood Spring View Phase seven B subdivision final plat, application number twenty-two point zero three zero, located at approximately sixty-four hundred Wasatch Back Drive in the Mountain Green area, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated October fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will move to our public hearing section of the meeting. Each of these will be a separate public hearing and there's three of them. So we will hear from staff, if the applicant is here, we'll hear from the applicant and then we'll go into public hearing, come back out of public hearing, back into the meeting and then make our decision on each of these items. Josh, let's go ahead and go forward with item number one. This is a proposed map, a zone map amendment, approximately one point four nine acres, going from RR one and A twenty to Town Center.
Uh, this is application number twenty-two point zero five zero, the Hanselman Rezone. The applicant is requesting approval to rezone their property, which is one point four nine acres in size on the south side of Old Highway Road to southeast of the Sinclair gas station. From RR one and A twenty zone to Town Center. Staff has reviewed the application, we have looked through the general plan. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the, the general plan. As such, we are recommending approval. The planning commission has forwarded to you a recommendation of approval.
Okay, questions for staff?
This is on the south side of Old High, uh, Old Highway, whatever it is, one.
Old Highway.
Old Highway. It's on the south side, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and there's a house there currently or there's not a house?
Um, yeah, I could.
Yeah, there's a house there currently.
Okay, that's why I was curious. Okay.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing, meeting and convene a public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we are now in public hearing.
Don't you have to have a second or do you?
Thank you, I skipped the second. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Voted on, okay, you have a second.
And we've already voted.
And I'm still in favor.
Okay, we're still in favor. Thanks for keeping me straight here. Okay, any comments, public comment? Okay, if not, we'll look for a motion to go back into the public meeting and adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Move in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, you're good. Okay, back in the public meeting, we're on item number one, under public hearings. Proposed, proposed zone map amendment of approximately one point four nine acres going from RR one and A twenty to Town Center.
I'll make a motion to approve the Hanselman Rezone Map Amendment, application number twenty-two point zero five zero, changing one point four nine acres from RR one and A twenty to Town Center, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated October fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move to item number two, under our public hearings. This is a proposed rezone map amendment of approximately five point nine one acres, going from RR one and A twenty to RM dash fifteen.
Thanks. Uh, application number twenty-two point zero five two is the Oslo Rezone. The applicant is requesting approval to a rezone from RR one. The applicant is requesting approval to rezone from RR one and A twenty to Town, uh, to the RM fifteen zoning district. The general plan designation designates this as Town Center. Uh, the property is located, um, east of, or west of the Sinclair, between the LDS church and the, uh, gas station there on the north side of Old Highway Road. Staff has reviewed the application and have, have reviewed the general plan. Uh, we believe it's consistent with, uh, the requirements of the general plan. Uh, as such, we are recommending approval of the rezoning to RM fifteen, and the, uh, planning commission also is forwarding a recommendation of approval.
Josh, remind me what the RM designation is?
Uh, it's multi-family.
Multi-family, residential multi-family. Okay. Any questions for staff?
The only question I had was, and I've already asked Debbie about it, but why didn't they go with a Town Center designation versus the RM one fifteen?
Town Center requires, uh, at least thirty-five percent of commercial as well as development agreement. Uh, and they wanted to put in townhomes.
From what I read, they're trying to make some affordable housing here, is that what I understood from the.
Given the size of the property, probably doing a thirty percent commercial would be a difficult.
Right, with five point nine one acres, yeah, it'd be difficult.
That's one of the challenges that we have with this Town Center area. It would be a lot easier if it was all under one owner and they could just master plan the whole thing.
Right.
Without that.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? And I assume the applicant is not here? Or is the applicant here? Okay. If not, we'll look for a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we are now in public hearing. Seeing no public hearing, comments, we'll look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Look for a motion for item number two, proposed rezone map amendment.
So, is, I think I'm generally inclined to vote in favor of this. Is there any concern with moving from the Town Center to the RM fifteen? I mean, the planning commission recommended it, so that's why I'm.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned.
I think, given the location of it, where it's not, I think if it were right in the middle of the Town Center area, I'd be more concerned about that.
I think it's probably on that perimeter, right? The northwest edge of what's land use planned as Town Center?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it's basically, I mean, you've got, if you take that bullet, that target, and put it right around it, it just seems to me like that's a Town Center more than anything else, the whole area.
If you look at the future land use map, it's right on the edge of the Town Center zoning.
Well, and, and I.
I guess I would say that multifamily housing is, from my perspective, a part of a Town Center. So, that's why I'm not overly concerned about it. You have your commercial elements, but what gives vibrancy to the center are the residents that live within walking distance to it. Do you have a comment, Josh?
Um, just the Town Center description. Um, so you have the land use map, but you also have a description that describes the types of uses that should go in there. And the Town Center, uh, description says, the Town Center designation denotes area suitable for a mixture of commercial employment and supporting residential uses in appropriate locations. Horizontal mixed uses would be required for massive land projects, and vertical mixed uses would be encouraged. And then it goes on to talk about the residential type uses in the Town Center category. But it does state that supporting residential uses in appropriate locations. That's why staff felt that this, this property met the general plan designation requirement.
Well, and it is, in terms of transitioning uses, it's kind of between the church and at least what's currently a single-family use. I don't know how long that will stay that way, but. So that makes sense as well, in terms of your basic Euclidean zoning concepts.
Is that part of a motion?
I can make a motion if you're ready for a motion.
Ready to move on.
Move to approve the Ossler Rezone Map Amendment, application number twenty-two point zero five two, changing five point nine one acres from RR one and A twenty to RM fifteen, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the zone map amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We will move to public hearing, item number three. Proposed zone map amendment of approximately eleven acres going from A twenty to Town Center, located approximately fifty-two twenty-four West Cemetery Road, Mountain Green.
Okay, this is backwards in my packet, so I'm, just a second. Okay.
Uh, this is application number twenty-two point zero five three, uh, the Eldridge Rezone. They're requesting reasonable property from A twenty to, uh, Town Center. It's a, oh, it's probably something eleven acres, uh, in size, and it's actually located due north of the previous application. Staff has reviewed the application, uh, and checked the conformance with the general plan, and we believe it's in line with the requirements of the general plan, and therefore we are recommending approval. Planning commission also has forwarded a recommendation of approval.
So are they, so it's immediately north. There's some interesting property shapes in this area. Are they, are they planning on developing this together? The, or is it just coincidence that they're in front of us at the same time?
I think it's coincidence that's.
And it's, it's not a zoning question, I'm just wondering where the access is to the project, that, that's why I asked it, but.
I think that's part of the questions that they'll have to track down when they go to develop it, uh, as part of their subdivision or as part of their commercial development that they're gonna put in. They haven't really explained that's what they wanna do, but my understanding is they're taking access from the Cemetery Drive.
It is interesting that it's, you could look at it as a little bit further away from the Town Center than this one, but yet, we're, we're looking at having that be a Town Center zoning, so.
So, is that?
Although the stuff to the east would likely prevent a Town Center at some point, I would think as well.
Right, so the road that goes to the cemetery up to their property, is that county road, or is that a private road?
I didn't think it was a road at all, I thought it was just a trail. It's what you pull the hearse up on, through the parking lot of the church.
Well, that's on the other side, this is, this is the east side.
Comes off of Trappers Loop.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's just a dirt road, yeah.
It's just a dirt road.
I don't believe it's a county road, it certainly hasn't been established as a county road. It has never been maintained as a county road.
Well, and the lot lines don't suggest that it's a county road.
Okay, so that's gonna be an issue, though, the access. And, and they're gonna fight a little bit with UDOT on that access, I'm sure, to Trappers Loop, because historically, UDOT has been, I mean, that's why the school doesn't access off of Trappers Loop. They're difficult to.
So he might have to get together with Osslers.
They may have to work something else, although the topography there, that's a very steep little climb up to that road, so.
Right.
That would be an interesting thing. Of course, the, the zoning does not guarantee the access or anything else, that, that'll still have to be worked out.
That's true, that would be handled through the development process, either the site plan process or subdivision.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public meeting and convene a public hearing on this matter.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now in public hearing for item number three. Seeing no public comments for the public hearing, I'll look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting.
I move that we go out of public hearing.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, we are now back in the public meeting, and look for either comments or a motion on item number three.
Can I just ask one question? So this will have to have commercial in it?
It will.
Yeah, a minimum of thirty-five percent.
Okay, alright.
Has to be commercial, but that, but they could go all commercial, it's just a minimum of thirty-five percent.
Okay. Okay. And right around here is zone RR ten.
I move to approve the Eldridge Rezone Map Amendment, application number twenty-two point zero five three, changing eleven acres from A twenty to TC, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated October fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to approve the map amendment, as noted, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we will move to our commissioner comments section, Commissioner Fackrell.
Uh, we had a very rainy, um, time at the USAC meeting, both Matt and I. Wish we could've had that amount of rain here. Two inches or plus of rain. And anyway, there's a lot of things learned there. The Trails Committee, or Trails Board is working on, uh, I mean, we got a preliminary plan, it's not complete yet. Um, they're trying to help us get to that point, which should be by our November meeting, which we will have a meeting on the, I think it's the second of November in the evening. Um, so that's moving along. Um. Trying to think if there's anything else. If there is, I'll tell you next time.
Sounds good, or you can call or email or text or syndicate or pigeon, whatever you wanna do. Commissioner McConnell?
Uh, the YCC had a successful golf tournament in terms of their overall fundraising. It was at the Ogden Country Club. It was a beautiful day, and you had little mosquitoes that bite your hands, that's.
Did you, did you golf?
I did golf, I even hit the ball reasonably well, on some occasions, on others not so much. Which is how my golf game goes, it's very sporadic. I only play hole to hole, and you have to watch me or I'll sue you.
Alright, um, I, the only comment I had is that the county, um, commission and department heads continue our budget sessions this week, tomorrow, and Thursday. For any members of the public that would like to come and enjoy that process, you're welcome to join us. That's starting at, uh, four o'clock the next two nights. Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, there's a lot going on, but I don't have any public comments. I guess the only one would be, um, um, we'll find a time where maybe we can meet and discuss the, uh, concept plan on the Fairgrounds Park. I think I forwarded that to all of you last week, so we can discuss on what we need to do moving forward with that. Um, I didn't ask ahead of time like our attorney has taught us to, but, um, I'll also need to add for the closed session, um, uh, discuss purchase, exchange, or lease of real property.
Well, perfect, I was, I was gonna ask for that, too, so. Oh, great. We're on the same wavelength. Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, I'm meeting with Melissa Freegang on, on the opioid settlement and what some of the things that we can do with that. I'll, I'll bring that back, and hopefully we can use that money wisely that we get. Have something profitable for our community, so. Not a moss.
Thank you. Okay, um, it's been requested that we move into a closed session for the discussion of purchase or disposition of real property as well as pending or reasonably imminent litigation.
And competency of an individual.
Okay, and character and competency of an, of an individual. Professional character and competency of an individual.
Character and professional competency.
Character and professional competency of an individual. Do we have a motion for that?
So, wait.
Second.
Okay, this is a roll call vote, Commissioner Fackrell?
Aye.
Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
I vote aye, Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, we will move into a closed session. Following the closed session, uh, we will adjourn our.